Agenda item number one, call to order. Please, all please rise. Our guest this evening is Reverend Lewin from the Bible Fellowship Baptist Church. Reverend Lewin?
By the way, I do want you to know that this is just not the day. I pray for you all, everything.
Thank you, we really appreciate that.
Father in heaven, people have no sense to realize that without you, life is useless. We need you in everything we do. We thank you dear God that you allowed us to come here today. We pray for our government, Lord, and pray that you give these people a mind of Christ. In light of that, if they have a mind for you, a mind for the people, then we can get something done. Let them work together, Lord. Keep them in your memory. You see everything they do, you hear every word they say, you know it's all they think. Would you delight, Lord, think your thoughts through them? Let them see from your perspective. Teach them your way. Guide them, teach them. Give them wisdom to do the right thing. And pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. And this evening, we're going to have Jonathan Hardman from Troop 827. Ladies and gentlemen, allegiance, sir.
Audience, in turn, may I please join in your pleasure of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Secretary Harrison, would you do a roll call, please? Here.
Reverend T. Almiron, President. Alderman Stamps, Alderman Jones, Alderman LeRach.
Thank you. Item number two is public comments. This evening, for the first public comment, we have Mayor Joe Garcia. Sir?
Thank you. Thank you for y'all coming to appear here before you, and I'd like to introduce Seth Stokes, who has made up for his capacity. He, in my capacity, is mayor of the city of Patterson. I'd like to invite the city of Brookshire and everyone here to join with us in a community effort. It's our second annual National Take Back Day collection effort. The city of Patterson will be hosting this in downtown Patterson. DEA has an annual program every year whereby they try and collect any unused prescriptions, medication, local law enforcement working with DEA, and takes it, they weigh it, and they do this across the entire country. And hopefully, before kids get out of school for the summer, we've got some of these old prescription things out of their homes. Last year, we had a ballpark of eighty pounds of prescription drugs that we collected in the city of Patterson, from the Patterson community. We also, at the same time, with one of our community partners, Allegiance Bank, will be providing a free shredding of documents for anyone who wants to bring their documents there and have them shredded. Usually, the document truck, and it should have, as last year we had it, had a video where you can watch them shred their documents. There's no cost for any of this. It's a community effort. It'll be in downtown Patterson. And for those of you that don't know where downtown Patterson is, you've got about five or six weeks to find it. But we'd like to make this a community effort. If we all work together, I think we could get more than eighty, ninety pounds of prescription drugs off the streets of our community. Last year, we had, I think in the ballpark of fifteen hundred pounds of material that was shredded. Folks brought it up there. We'll be there to help you unload it, we'll be there to help dispose of it. And as far as the prescription medication or any of those things, the sheriff's office and Waller County Constable Joe Schreiber will be there. We appreciate your support in trying to get this out in our community, maybe in our schools and in our churches, and have folks come together, try to work together to get this, I guess, to the next level. And we plan to do this every year, so maybe together we can make this a successful event.
Thank you.
When is it, Joe?
It's the twenty-seventh of April, between ten a.m. and two p.m. It's a Saturday, and we'll start about ten o'clock, and you go until two, or whatever time the last person shows up.
What is that gonna be?
Downtown Patterson.
All right, good. Because I got the fire department.
Bring them.
That day.
Okay.
The second person is Ms. Sandy Sears. Ma'am?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I'm back here to check on my favorite issues. I have been speaking about lighting as part of an effort to take the growth of Brookshire and make it happen in a nice way, and in a safe way. Thank you, Ms. Harrison, for sending me that document back a while that had the old commercial, the ordinances currently in force, and highlighting the lighting section, which was like this big. And it addressed the needs of having enough light on a commercial property, but it didn't address the needs of having, or the problems of having too much light, or having it go in a direction that it shouldn't be going in off people's property, like at the Exxon station and on the corner of 359 and the freeway and the Executive Inn, still have. I understand that there is some work being done on another ordinance. Thank you, Mr. Hardman.
It's coming, the draft on that you have at the next meeting, it's going to be for the second meeting.
Wonderful. Are you taking some stuff out of the signage one that looked like it had, no?
No, what, let me talk to you after.
Sure, sure. But I'm glad to hear.
Just because of commercial lighting.
Yeah, I'm glad to hear that it's being worked on and progress is being made, and it might be available to look at as a draft next time.
At the next council meeting, it will be here.
Great. And then, the other thing was, I looked at the website before I came over here, and we, you know, and I know you guys are trying to make an effort to get the ordinances online, but right now, there's a link that you click to, click on it, and it's a blank page. So there's no ordinance. There used to be two little ones up there, but now there's none. So the process you guys have got to go through, I don't know if you've gone into the planning stages or got another web developer or whatever, but, you know, you've got to make sure every ordinance is scanned into a PDF document and give that to the person who's going to put it online. It could be done, depending on how many you have, I don't know how many you have, it could be done in a day or two. So I just wanted to see if you guys were doing that, and if you realized that you had to scan all those PDFs and make sure that process gets going, because that's part of the city halls, what they have to do for the web developer, before the web developer can put them online. So I don't know if that's done or not, but I just wanted to bring that up, because I'm looking forward to being able to see every single ordinance online, as you guys are attempting to do. That's it.
Thank you.
If I may, if you go to one alternative, you can go to MUNICO, M-U-N-I-C-O-D-E.
That's where I went.
You went to MUNICO and then did not?
And it was a blank page. That's a blank page right now.
Okay. So I said, they were all loaded up to MUNICO, and so we'll just check this in once we come through.
Maybe they're up in there, but the page hasn't been finished developing, so we can retrieve them out of there and just slam.
What she's referring to is the city's website. You can sit there, MUNICO just keeps loading. I had my computer up two hours one day and never loaded them up.
And you couldn't get to MUNICO?
If you go to MUNICO's direct website, you can get it, but on our city website, it's not loading it correctly.
Okay, so the link, so let me follow. The link from the city to MUNICO?
It's not correct.
It's not, it's not, you can't get?
You can't, it doesn't retrieve them, so that has to be fixed.
All right.
All right. Agenda item number three is a presentation by the Brookshire Police Department in honor of local youth. And this, Alderman Stamps?
At this time, I'm turning it over to Corporal Rose and Lieutenant McDowell. Would everyone please stand in honor of our honorary?
you to our newest honorary officer, Officer DJ. DJ, we have prepared a special proclamation for you, and it's in honor of you, in honor of DJ, whereas DJ is one of the most honorable and famous citizens in the city of Brookshire, whereas DJ has been made an official firefighter for the Brookshire Volunteer Fire Department and an official patrolman for the city of Brookshire Police Department, and whereas DJ is one of the most courageous and powerful citizens in the city of Brookshire and that which we've never seen. Whereas DJ has the respect, love, and affections of all his fellow citizens, whereas DJ is a role model to the citizens of Brookshire, both young and old, whereas the city of Brookshire recognizes DJ's incredible spirit, incredible force of life, and superior intelligence, and whereas DJ's determination and contributions to the city are immeasurable, now therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Brookshire, on behalf of the city council members, Lee Jones, Kim Branch, Eric Green, Lyndon Stamps, Marilyn Vaughn, and all the citizens hereof, I do by present a key to the city of Brookshire. There you are, sir.
Can you see right here? Can you see it? Can you see it so I can see it? I have to bend over, Fran, you should go.
Okay, agenda item number four, discussion of possible action regarding 2019 Consumer Price Index CPI adjustment to municipal telecommunications right-of-way access line rates.
Where's Mr. Horace at? How's he getting us? Pardon me. Mayor, council, on item number four, back when, several, many years ago, when they deregulated the industry, the telephone industry, and they deregulated that, what they did is they took, I think it was ninety-seven or even before then, they took whatever we were getting from the city, what you were getting, the amount you were getting, and that was all you could get from your franchise fees. Once your franchise expired, that was all you could get, and then there was an automatic increase, which got based on the CPI. And so since that time, what you get for these type of right-of-way fees is you can either accept the increase, which is here, the one point something increase, or you can decline the increase, but that's it. If you take no action, it automatically increases. If you take an action, you can take an action to decline the increase, but that's it, that's all it is. So that's what's here today. They continue this once a year, asking if you want to accept the one point one-one-two percent increase, and that's what they use to do right of way.
Counsel, would anyone like to make a motion? There's no motion, Lord?
If there's no motion, then the increase automatically goes into effect. So you don't need a motion to approve, you would take the text of motion to deny. But once again, if I didn't say the telecommunications, telephone lines, all of that regulated by the state. And part of that regulation, they have a formula, and that they use to determine the amount that each city can receive. And then each year, the state comes back and tells you, this is what the cost, the Consumer Price Index increase is, you can either accept it or you can decline.
I might come up in that way, except for 2019 Consumer Price Index adjustment to municipal telecommunications right-of-way access line rates.
Second?
We have a motion made by Councilwoman Branch, the first I heard, for the second was Councilman Jones. All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye. Motion passes, it's unanimous. Agenda item number five, discussion of possible action regarding a resolution to nominate a candidate for the vacant position on the Waller County Appraisal District Board of Directors. We have an opportunity to replace one of the directors. Does anyone have a nomination?
No, but I did get a chance to speak with Mr. Glover, and I had some questions. And he explained to me the work that, that position, you know, the work you were doing to do in that position. I don't think it's a position that we should rush and put anybody into. And I did ask him to come and speak tonight, but he told me that he has a lot going on. I would like to set a time on the next meeting, if we can schedule Mr. Glover to come in and explain the work that he was doing while he was on that board, so we'll get a better understanding, because it's a very important board position we need.
Is that your motion?
Yes, ma'am.
We have a motion by Councilman Green, a second by Councilwoman Branch. All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye. Motion passes, it's unanimous. Agenda item number six, discussion of possible action regarding request to hold National Day of Prayer at the Brookshire Convention Center on May 2nd, 2019, Mrs. Margaret Salinas. Is she here this evening?
No, there's no, don't call me.
Right. So I'll enter your motion.
I'll make a motion, they'll be approving the National Day of Prayer at the Brookshire Convention Center on May 2nd, 2019.
Second? We have a motion made by Mayor Potem Vaughn, a second by Councilman Stamps. All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye. Motion passes, it's unanimous. Agenda item number seven, discussion of possible actions, stopping rental of convention center until unmentionable things can be handled. Alderwoman Branch?
It's my understanding that supposedly our unmanageables have stopped, so since we're still going out for bids to rent, make the convention center, I'd like to table this, unless there's a problem that comes right of suzy key.
All right. Agenda item number eight, discussion of possible action regarding use of Board Book. Alderwoman Branch?
Mayor and council, I put this on the agenda. I was asking to see, could we use Board Book to upload the agendas and what, only the attachments that is in our package each week that is accessible, that could be accessible, not anything that's not of public knowledge, to be uploaded in order to be put on the website that the citizens of Brookshire could have a full understanding when they come to meetings, what the agenda is, and just like the Texas Commission of Environmental Quality, this is standing. And I would like to make it to be a motion that that take place.
Is it possible to, I know when we started using Board Book, there were licenses, and I don't know if?
You'll be okay with that, because what I'm given from Alderwoman Branch is that she wants, the Board Book that you have now, to be able to upload that, things that may be confidential, like memos that I may have you like that, that won't be uploaded. So you just upload a sanitized version, and that'll go out, so the people, they get the agenda, all of that information. If it was something that was more confidential, that still just goes out to you guys, to you guys, but the public would get it, so they get the full agenda, as opposed to, they get the full agenda packet, as opposed to just a, and so if you can do that, you just have to be able to.
So they just put it on?
Yeah, you have to put a link, we got the Board Book, where it's only uploaded, just like they sent me a link, so I can get to it. It'll be a link that'll be on the online, and they just link it, and then you can pull it up. So everybody would have to technically put it up.
I guess they would have to have a guest account.
No, because what you do is, if you put it on, we get them to, so there's no need for a password for it's on that link. Like if you get it, or you just automatically fill in the password, like for the link, if it's Pertile, you put that in there, anybody that would click on the link online, my password is automatically there, so they can get it. They can link it, they can print it out. Those people that have access here, that are online, they can sit there, link it on their phone, just link it online, link it to it online.
If you want to see an effective use of that, go to Royal ISD's website. They've got it on there.
Was that your motion, Ms. Branch?
Yes, that was.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Branch, a second by Mayor Potem Vaughn. All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye. Motion passes, it's unanimous. Item number nine, discussion of possible action regarding making an agenda item for city council reports about items of community interest. Alderwoman Branch?
Mayor and council, I brought this to your attention, I've noticed in watching this, the city of Katy has this on theirs, and after having a discussion with Mr. Pertile, as long as it's not just rambling on about our personal lives, that we could put this on, I guess I'll use the July Fourth Festival for our?
And events, the different events? But it has, it has to?
It has to pertain to the city.
Things of community interest, and there's a specific definition. It takes a while for you as a council to get used to doing that, because it's, you know, you just can't say, well, it's happy birthday to Ms. Pertile, unless, if Ms. Pertile, and she's ninety-five years old and a resident of Brookshire, that's something of community interest. So those are the type of things. Normally, even though you don't say Councilwoman's report, but you can put it on as Councilwoman's report, I just have to make sure that you guys understand that it's not, you just talk about anything, and I get you the definition of what things of community interest are, and you just got to follow that. And so, but you can do that, that's allowed, the law will allow you to do those things of community interest.
And Mr. Pertile assured me that he'd be sending us memos if we got online. So that's my motivation.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Branch, a second by Councilman Jones. All in favor, please raise your hand, say aye. Motion passes, it's unanimous. Agenda item number ten, update on Dr. Clay's recommendation findings on Bacon Street at Gessner. Alderwoman Branch? Good evening, Dr. Clay.
Good evening, welcome. You're running a letter.
Yes, sir.
Let me ask you, page two, any color on yours?
That's separate, and it's?
Page one?
It's like yours.
I want to call you, potential first to page two of the report. So they were concerned about, which is very long, of Gasco Road, between 359 and Bacon Street, which is entrance to the football home park, and it's certainly a drainage problem there. The, what's happening is a concentration of flow that's at Gasco and 359, and then it flows west on what we label ditch one, here on the mountain. Goes west until it gets to Bacon Street. There's a large ditch in Bacon Street going south on the west side of that, it goes down and it's been drained by BKDD's outflow ditch, goes all the way to Keller Creek. So, turning to page four, this is a depiction of the area that drains to that, you can see it's pretty large, I think it's a hundred something acres, area plate, where you leave is slightly smaller, and then again, so the ditches and culverts that are there now. Any questions at this point about orientation of where we are? Okay, so turn over this page, try to get to the bottom line on the page. Yes. The top of page eight, in section eight, we talked about pretty much the results of what we've been doing. The, see the drainage unit, it's called ditch one, culvert one, ditch two, culvert two, just like we refer to on the map. And the flow in the next column is the, is the amount of water that reaches and goes through those particular units, each one of them. The next column is the capacity to handle that flow, and you can see, in each case, the capacity is considered less than the actual flow that's trying to go through there. So of course, that's the problem. Then, the next column is our conclusion that to solve that situation, here's what you have to do in each of those cases. Ditch one and ditch two are existing, or at least three bottomed dishes, somewhat deeper than normal road ditches, but all, there's no, particularly on ditch one, there's no way to expand it. I mean, it's, on one side, it's a fence and a parking area for the storage, and the other side is the edge of the street. So if you want to increase that capacity in that ditch, we have to concrete land it, and that's what we've set up cost, that's what we're going to do. Now, where, pipes cross Gasco, that's the north end of Bacon. There's one fourteen-inch pipe under the road now, and you can see that that's the worst bottleneck, when you look back at this chart on top of section eight. That's culvert Warren, that only has a capacity to handle sixty CFS, and we have a flow of one hundred and seventy, so that only carries about a third of the flow, it would cover what we're calling a twenty-five years farm, that is a small event that we'd expect to happen once every twenty-five years. But that's a fairly common event, to happen for two hundred years following that. So of course, that's the problem. Then the next column is our conclusion that to solve that situation, here's what you have to do in each of those cases. Ditch one and ditch two are existing, well, that's the bottom dishes, somewhat deeper than normal road ditches. But all, there's no, particularly on ditch one, there's no way to expand it. I mean, it's, on one side, it's a fence and the parking area for the storage, and the other side is the edge of the street. So if you want to increase that capacity in that ditch, we have to concrete line it. And that's what we've set up cost estimate to do. Now where the pipes cross Gasco, that's the north end of Bacon. There's one 14-inch pipe under the road now and you can see that that's the worst bottleneck when you look back at this chart on top of section eight. That's culvert Warren, that only has a capacity to handle 60 CFs and we have a flow of 170. So that only carries about a third of the flow. It would cover what we're calling a 25 years farm. That is a small event that we expect to happen once every 25 years. But that's a fairly common event to happen for 200-inch follow-in projects like this. Now, the final column is what the new capacity would be if we did concrete line it, if we did add new culverts across Gasco. And you can see that that would, by doing that, we would equal or exceed what we're trying to deal with. The only other thing I've called your attention here on section eight is the last name called culvert two. And that's, looking back, it's from the map on page four. See culvert two has started in the lower left-hand corner of a red area. And that culvert doesn't exist even though the drainage district has put a ditch from Gasco Road down to their main ditch, we're calling ditch X, or BKDD ditch X. The drainage district can't flood that ditch, but there's no culvert across the road until there's water. So we'd certainly recommend the city put one there no matter what else you do. Getting down to the bottom of page eight, we talked about the cost of all these things. Concrete lining, etc.
Well, I haven't paid the year, Dr. Clay, I saw...
Anyway, because of course, they can choose among these items, that's the cost estimate under section nine. I would certainly recommend that you do item D, I just put the culvert I just spoke in across Gasco. Culvert one, which is out of B here, probably also a good value for your money. Concrete lining or dishes, that's what I'm making a cost for them. So if you have any questions, I'll just leave it at that. If you have any questions, you need to move us over.
Dr. Clay, did you speak with Mr. Calcomny or Mr. Tisman at BKDD about these found properties?
They have, well, in fact, they have, their master plan includes not exactly this, but it has data and information that we pretty much pulled together to come up with these flows. So this is consistent, I would say, with their master plan.
I'd like to ask the council to make a comment, and I really like you, Mr. Green. I'd like to Mr. Green to work with Superintendent Mr. Stank Tisman at the BKDD and see could we come up with a plan to get this done that would be placed into the rest of the city. That's my motion, sir.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Branch, a second by Councilwoman Jones. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion passes, it's unanimous. Agenda item number 11, discussion of possible action regarding developing a city master plan to address drainage and infrastructure.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Branch.
I'm sorry. Mayor and council, we had a gentleman that came out that I tried to reach out to, to have him come back with a presentation. He's been hired by another city. I'd like to ask that the council, ask Dr. Clay, because I really like Dr. Clay, to bring us ideas of who we could hire to develop a city master plan for the city.
No, Branch is available to do this.
As a matter of fact, we have a grant, it's the CD, the CD planning grant, we were awarded $52,830. And according to Bruce at Grant Works, who we hired, they're already working on it. This was done a couple of months ago. He said it includes the water sewer, drainage streets, and the thoroughfares. And there's like 19 maps that they're going to be preparing for us. That was the grant that we applied and were awarded, I think maybe three, four months ago.
About six months ago. What it was, council, is if you remember, you came to the CDPG and there were about nine different grants that you could apply for, and we applied for just about all of them. I think we got seven out of the nine. And it just takes a while for them to come through the process, but I think out of the nine different areas, we were awarded grants of seven.
So are we telling that? So Bruce has assured me they're already working on that. I guess we could ask him to do an update.
Do you want a motion for that, Mr. Pertile?
You know, anyone, just give them.
All right. Agenda item number 12, discussion of possible action regarding placing decorative lighting at 3726 Forest Street, Alderman Green.
Yes, this light was hit by a car, I guess about three years ago when I called you to let you know that the wire, the live wire was just in there. It's just never been replaced. That's on Forest Street. There were two, one's closer to the corner and one is in between two pieces of property.
Is the cost a question?
Yeah.
Well, since it's just a replacement, I have to reach out to Center Point to see what the cost of replacement is. I just feel it's actually a new one that we were putting in or a replacement, but now that I know it's a replacement, I can give Center Point to check on the price.
So you've brought in that information?
Yes, ma'am.
Agenda item number 13, discussion of possible action regarding ordinance number four and ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Brookshire, Texas, detaching and excluding certain territories from the city of Brookshire, defining by meets and bounds the territory so excluded and providing that the ordinance take effect can be enforced from and after its passage. Mr. Pertile?
Mayor and council, it's going to take me a minute to walk you through this, but I'll eventually get to where we need to be. About 2017, when we noticed that things were really starting to blow up out there, you as a council decided, hey, we need to get together and get a map, get a real official map. You hired BIS, which they do most county maps. If you go to any appraisal district throughout the state, you'll see that BIS, they do maps. So as a council, we hired BIS to come in to do an official city map. What they do when they do maps, they go through, they ask, they pull all the documents that you have, they go through and if you don't have documentation, for instance, if there was an annexation and there's no ordinance to back it up, they exclude that from the map because there's no documentation to do that. So that's what they do. If it was, if it was an area where there was, that's not in the city, but there's documentation that there was an annexation, they add that to the map because they go through and they track the paperwork so that there's an area, they were in the city or not in the city, but what they do, they track the paperwork. What happened is in 2017, when there was, the official map was adopted, there was areas that people had always thought were in the city, there was no paperwork, those tracks were excluded from the city. There was area that people had been excluded from the city and that since there was no paperwork to show that it had been legally excluded, those areas were put into the city. And those areas were put into the city in 2017, they don't go on the tax roll until 2018. So in 2018, 2018 was around, you had people who had property that had never paid city property tax because they believed they were excluded from the city, they got tax notices. So, and that's probably where we dropped the ball and we should have let those people know that, hey, you're getting ready to get a tax notice. Well, when they got, when they got the tax notices, it was like you kicked the fire out of bed because they never had to pay taxes. So when I started doing, when the phones started ringing and I got through all the cussing and the fussing and what we did, tried to walk through and say, how is it that this would have happened? So what we did, we looked and we found the original incorporation of the city because that's what BIS do. The property that were put into the city, it was from when the city became a city, when it stopped in the village of Kellner and became the city of Brookshire, there was an election. In that election, there was an actual legal description, what we call meets and bounds, that the people voted on. So we had a copy of that and, but in order to make sure, when we were talking to the property owners, because yes, you can understand, they were upset because now they have to pay taxes because now they're in the city, we to make them sure, we went to the county to pull the actual election order, to pull all that information. So we gave that to those property owners and said, hey, we apologize, we don't know what happened, but this shows that you were in the city originally. With a couple of the property owners that we met with, and one I've had business dealings with them for a while and I told them, hey, this doesn't feel right, but we're going to keep looking because for it to be since, you know, 46, that it's been like that for a long time, it's just something, but we'll keep looking if there's anything, if they will find anything, we'll let you know. Well, less than a month ago, found an ordinance, which is ordinance number four, that's on the agenda. That ordinance number four, what it shows, and you can pass it out. You're going to see in the upper left-hand corner, it's marked out, an area that's excluded, ordinance number four, there was, when the election was held in May to incorporate the city, and I'm just thinking about on what you can come to look from, supposedly from the paperwork, there was an area of the city that really didn't want to be in there even though after the election they were put in there. So from August of 1946, they came to the city council and the city council excluded, excluded that property. In 47, they excluded that property. That ordinance was never recorded, not over at the county, but they excluded. So that's why that area had been excluded. That's the area that you see in that green that says ordinance number four. So that's the area where the property owners that we've been talking to, that was their area. So once we found that that area had been annexed, they are outside the city. And so what I'm coming to you tonight to explain to the council that with them, we're going to send those people letters, those people who pay taxes on their property, to let them know that they're going to get refund of those taxes and those people are not in the city. And what I'm going to do to make sure that any future person who buys that property, they'll know, going to record that ordinance number four. Because once it's recorded and it's put in the land records, when somebody gets ready to buy that property, it'll be there. Because you don't necessarily have to record these type ordinances. I try to make a habit of doing that, but back then in the 40s and 47 or so, they didn't. But, so that way it's easy to find from property records if it's recorded. But I'm going to record this ordinance and then that way any subsequent property owner will know that this area is currently outside the city. And those people who were, who paid the taxes, we will have to give them a pay refund. So that's where we are, that's where you'll see that number four. One of the side, side note to what happened, which is really unfortunate, is that one of the residents in that area is also a candidate for elective office in the city and that individual would not be eligible if they were to win to assume that office because part of the requirement is that you have to be a resident in the city for a year. And that's the unfortunate part about this. But from the, in the long standing, is that we now have a good basis for our city limits. What we're going to try to do is get Dr. Clay to go through and finish up all the different ordinances that we have, give us this one map, we'll bring that map to you, we will adopt that map, that's going to be our map. And we just move forward from that point, which we should. That will help our, help set our boundaries, we'll know where our boundaries are, we know we have one out ETJ. And with everything going out here, you know, we're going to have to get with Patterson, you know, the mayor from Patterson's here, there's some land that's been in their ETJ or our ETJ. We're going to have to meet with them to cuss and cuss about that, but we're going to have to do the same thing with our other jointy people because when you got this broke, that's what happens. And so we're going to have to sit down and talk to them about that. But that's where we are and I wanted to give you that information.
So...
Yes.
Or what is your recommendation?
First, I don't think there's any action that the council would need to take. Where you would end up, where the council would end up having to take an action if it were to get to that point would be if the candidate that is the longest resident of the city were to win that office, then the council would have to take an action at that point and canvassing another to deny seating that, that's the only official action that the council would have to take. Because we're going to, we're going to take these properties that we know, we're going to make sure that we get them a letter telling them, hey, this ordinance, it's been recorded. And also what we're going to do is when it comes back from the recordation, in that letter, we're going to put a copy of that, of that, the recordation when it comes back with a stamp on it, and put that in the letter so that that way they can take it and they'll have it, that it just comes back and say, this is what I had, this shows that it was excluded from the city back in 47. There's been no annexation of the property, voluntary or involuntary, so.
Just from a moment of public knowledge, these citizens could have came and used Senate Bill Six that was just signed in 2017 and said that they didn't want to be annexed to you, not that we did annex them into the property, is that correct?
No, not, not yet, no.
All right. To talk about the affected parties and also Mr. David Smith back here, together we're representing a group of the landowners in that thing. We ask that you approve, undo it because it's caused just a heck of a lot of confusion for everybody. And if you get this recorded, then our property is going to be made whole again, our legal status is set and I'm willing to take the consequences for my neighbors.
All right, if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion.
If there was...
No, there's no motion unless you were...
Since it's a possible action.
No, the only possible action is if by some chance you would say not, but my recommendation is that we move forward to clean it up because, I mean, we got the records now, let's just clean it up and move on.
All right. Agenda item number 14, discussion of possible action regarding hear voice of statements and reports. If there's no discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
We have a motion made by Councilwoman Green, a second by Mayor Potem Vaughn. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, any abstentions? For the record, the motion passes, liaising being Councilman Green, Councilman Stams, Mayor Potem Vaughn, Councilman Jones, no one abstention, that being of Alderwoman Branch. Agenda item number 15, request for future agenda items?
I have one, ma'am.
Okay.
I'm requesting discussion of possible action of promoting, which relates the city of Brookshire Police Department to sponsor the first annual Royal ISD partnership.
Is there a second? We have a motion made by Mayor Potem Vaughn, a second by Councilwoman Green. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Miss Branch, you...
Sure.
All right.
Who seconded that motion also?
Green.
And Ms. Vaughn, I could barely hear you, but your motion was that council approves sponsoring first annual or Royal ISD?
Allow the city of Brookshire Police Department to sponsor, to be one of the sponsors.
That would be the city of Brookshire.
Not the police department.
Well, it's, well, city of Brookshire.
There is no...
Okay, Mr. Pertile, I understand. City of Brookshire, I stand corrected.
Are there any other future agenda items?
No, Paula, Mr. Pertile. There was a gentleman that helped in a gr... There was a gentleman that helped in a great deal in the city. Not that he solely acted on his own, but I would like to discuss, make a motion to discuss giving a proclamation to Justin Perriman at the, on the next agenda.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Branch, a second by Mayor Portem Vaughn. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion passes, it's unanimous. Any others?
All right. Discuss the possible action on night fixture, house support.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Jones, a second by Councilwoman Branch. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion passes, it's unanimous.
The main chief is vague to discuss.
Let the motion on, discuss the possible action on health control.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Jones, a second by Councilwoman Branch. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion passes, it's unanimous. Anyone else? All right, agenda item number sixteen, board's report, it's education again. There is a website, tml.org, it's with Texas Municipal League. And they have asked the people in attendance several times for the small cities to really start engaging in what's happening statewide. There are a lot of things that are affecting the small cities statewide, serious, serious things. So, I would encourage everybody to start doing the updates and looking at the updates on the Texas Municipal League website. They have almost a daily update on the legislative actions. The second thing is, there is also, most recently on the TML, is the open casting call for excellence awards. And what it basically pertains to is cities applying for awards in projects that they select. And I have a flyer for each one of you all to look at, and if you see that perhaps the city should apply for one of these, it's due in a couple of months. And again, and when I say the TML org, I encourage all the residents of Brookshire to please read that website, because there's literally some state issues that are affecting small cities, and the TML board, of which Mr. Pertal is one of them, is encouraging people, citizens particularly, to go to the legislature and be heard. All right, agenda item number seventeen, adjournment?
Father Conner, sorry, I didn't want to, I'm sorry. Is it okay?
No, no.
Oh.
Sorry. Agenda item number seventeen.
I'll make a motion, adjourn.
We have a motion made by Mayor Portem Vaughn, a second by Councilwoman Branch. All in favor, please raise your hand and say aye. Motion passes, it's unanimous.
And who's going to prevent the voters from being able to vote for somebody that's ineligible on the ballot? That's my question.